Good evening. This is the Town of Rutland Planning Commission. And this is Thursday, November 14th of 2024. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, the United States of America and to the Republic, for instance, one nation, under God, that is reasonable, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the agenda for tonight. I want to make a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve it.
And before we have a second, there's a couple of things I'd like to add to that. In Old Business, the Hubbard subdivision, Mylar, if you want to take a quick look at that. And also, we need to look at the next fiscal year budget, our budget for the Planning Commission. So are those adjustments okay with the maker of the motion? Is there a second?
Is the budget under New Business?
It's under Old Business for now.
Okay.
I'll second it with the amendment. Or the changes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Norm, technically, it should be under New Business.
Well, I can't vote for it.
All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll move into the public hearing for the subdivision for the Goodriches. And this is on Easy Street and Post Road. We have Nancy here in the audience, Scott online. Doesn't look like any members of the public are attending this evening to comment on this. Anything different than it was three weeks ago?
The access, the curb cut, the access permit, the curb cut for the driveway?
Sorry?
You get the curb cut for your driveway?
We have not gotten any notice of the approval of that application. We did get a notification of the the water connection, but I haven't heard anything about that.
Dave's out right now, so he's not able to do that.
Yeah, good point, Howard. Does that hold up our approval? Do we do it contingent on?
Because once Dave approves it, there's a recording fee and there's other fees to go along with it, so he was waiting for this. This was a catalyst for his decision, so.
Oh. Okay. Scott, do you have anything to add?
No, no, not at this point. I just not on the curb cut, no.
Or anything else? Regarding this? It looks like the paperwork's all in place, except for that.
I think Nancy had a couple of questions, but I'll ask them. What size water line do they want running in? And is it copper or plastic?
Okay, yeah, that's not pertinent to us approving the subdivision.
Okay.
So that's something to work out with Bill Sweet.
All right.
And of course, here.
Or the city, because he's connecting actually, isn't that sort of a city line? Yeah, to really check with the city to be totally sure, but probably going to be copper. But I'll check with them.
I can get that contact information from Bill.
It should've been in the letter. Was it in the water connection letter?
There are no specifications, just that it was approved.
Right, we don't, we don't do specifications because it's not our connection.
Okay, so we contact this.
You contact a plumber or like a contractor to actually dig the line to your house, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we just wanted to know what the town requires.
We don't have to do that for it.
Okay, so yeah, this is a, the current parcel size is 1.99. Going to 1A is 1.65 acres and B will be 0.34. Does the commission have any questions? For the subdividers? Okay, I think we've waited long enough to see if there's any public comments, so I'll close the public hearing. And now we'll take up the issue of approving the subdivision. Any questions or is there a motion?
I'm willing that we approve it.
I assume from what we're hearing that the curb cut's going to be okay. I mean, that'd be the only thing that could really become a problem.
So would you prefer to make this contingent on that?
Yes, I think we should.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
With the addition.
Okay, second?
Can I just ask a question? Is there a potential problem with the curb cut or?
The, the town has to authorize your curb cut to get from the highway, from the town highway onto your property. And that's, you know, they have to pick the spot and and agree to it, and it's in writing. So I mean, it's an important item, you need.
Fire safety.
You need a curb cut.
We're not aware of any problem.
No, it sounds like everything's going to be fine, but unfortunately, we don't have that in front of us.
And it's a matter of timing, the, the road commissioners on vacation are usually playing. So if, if, I mean, there should be no problem getting that done in 90 days. If there is, what have we done in the past?
There won't be a problem. I talked about it at the meeting, but he's not available to do it right now, so that's, he's paid on a personal leave, so I don't perceive any problem. You and I have talked about it, I don't think there will be any issue, it just hasn't been here to do it yet, so.
So it would be contingent on that. You would, you would want to go ahead and, and get the Mylar done, because that's due in 90 days, so that it's there when, when this permit is granted.
Shouldn't the curb cut be on the Mylar?
It's actually drawn on the, the proposed location of it is on the is on this map.
The ones that you gave us before. So you do have 90 days, so you may want to wait to hear back about the curb cut before you start the Mylar.
Do I need to come back here?
No, just drop off the Mylar. Yeah.
Under dividing.
We don't perceive any other issues.
There'll be a curb cut here too. It's already there.
So was there a second?
Already there, okay.
Was, was there?
I made a motion, I don't think there was.
Yeah, I don't think there was a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the Goodrich subdivision contingent on the curb cut being approved? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Wish it was a little more clear cut for you, but.
So we'll hear at some point about the curb cut, and once we hear about that, we can go ahead with the Mylar.
GR suggestion. You will let them know, Bill, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, still no public here for a public comment. Old Business, here's the Hubbard Mylar. Just have one copy, of course. Just thought people would be, after all we've been through, to get this. Want to take a look at it. No action is required. See anything there, Howard?
It looks survey, everything looks, you want to look at this, Norm? It appears to be fine.
Yes, this has proposed lot 1A. Doesn't identify any other lots.
Well, it's a two acre. Two acre lot.
Yeah, it looks like they're not showing it.
That's intended for this. Not that I didn't want to be in that right here.
Oh, okay, all right.
He just wants to sit up higher.
Yeah, I just, I want to be.
He likes a big chair.
I want to be a big shot with my hand.
They took it over to them.
Yeah, please, there's a huge gap here.
There.
One.
I don't show where that ends up. We didn't talk about, talk about it before, but you know, the right away that they got, I guess it goes on to maybe Hubbard Lane Place.
I think that's what they said.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, Howard. It's right here, see, in this one, so we're seeing it here, and then it crosses on to Hubbard Lane.
Hubbard Lane Place is, is a town identified road.
So this sits back off the, the road quite a ways.
It does, it's up by, it's up on the hill by Ted's, way up there, yeah.
Quite a ways to get to any road.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
They got that some of the buses and the whole thing.
They do, it's really nice there. You want this right?
It's unfortunate it isn't done yet, but it's right, it's, it's, it's in busy little spot there on it.
Oh, yep, thank you. I don't really need it.
Really, well.
All the notes, should I take?
No, hopefully it's okay, but it is in that, it's quite a little spot there right.
Okay. Back to order.
Sure.
I'm gonna move around the agenda a little bit. Let's take up the budget for next year, and you all should have a copy made for everyone. So there's a couple year budgets, there's a couple of budgets in here, there's the 2023, 24, and then those actuals. And then the 2425 budget. And the actuals we have so far, which is almost a year, a half a year in. But the Select Board's going to start working on this in early December, so we set budgets rather early here. So that they can get printed and get ready for Town Meeting Day. So the anomaly is, and we've talked about this, the, the legal fees we've incurred with working on, on the ordinances. And through no fault of our own, they got combined, everything we've asked Kevin to do was combined in one bill or maybe one or two.
Or two, yeah.
So that line item went over and we can easily explain that to the Select Board, which is most concerned, even though this is the Planning Commission budget, they're most concerned with each line item. So going, and we've hardly spent anything else this year, it is a total of, of $5,251. And our budget's 11,400. So we're, we're on, we're still on pace, even though we got that big hit in, in legal fees. So going forward, we'll, let's try to figure out what we want to propose for 2526. We may want to up the $2,000 for legal fees, or maybe not. We don't have a whole lot more for Kevin to do right now, but it's kind of hard to predict July of '25 through June of '26, what we'll need. The Regional Commission, that's most, that is not the fee, right, Bill?
Yeah, that's, that's payroll, that's like a, a stipend, yeah.
Yeah.
Like what? I'm sorry?
It's a stipend for the, the member of the town, Dave, what's his name?
Rosenbloom.
Rosenbloom, right, to attend Regional Planning Commission meetings. So, yeah, I mean.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So does that all come at one point? Do they bill us for that, or?
Put in a timesheet for it, so just like you guys put on a timesheet, he puts in a timesheet.
Oh, okay.
So there's been nothing this, this fiscal year yet, so it looks like he's probably not going to charge, but we probably want to put something in that line item anyway.
Because it could be someone else.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. And then the, the Planning Commission salaries are next, so those look like they're on, well, guys aren't putting in your timesheets for those. Is there? Mr. Cohen, would you please sit down? Is there a cost of living increase this year? So.
Just the budget.
So the budget is it's going to be another $132, that's it? So people aren't putting, aren't charging for those either, just like the Regional Planning Commission. So, you know, if we wanted to be real strict about it, we could say it would be $132 on top of the 4, 409. Miscellaneous, nothing has been spent on that, advertising. I'm surprised, we only spent $174, but.
Publication midweek during the, you know.
Okay. And consulting fees, we haven't added. So what are your ideas? Let's just go back through these, line by line, for the legal. Should we go higher than 2,000?
Question?
Yeah.
The very detailed letter on the subdivision regulations that Kevin drew, which I think so far, my review is really right on. Have we been billed for that yet?
Some of it.
That's, that's the charge, yeah.
I'm sorry?
That's the charge you have on the budget sheet there.
And that's, that's everything. We, we don't have any outstanding invoices out to Kevin Brown.
So do we anticipate, I mean, are we anticipating more, are we doing more ordinances? What do we, what's a?
Well, yeah, we haven't talked about that yet. It's not as much as we thought. It looks like it'll just be River Corridor and, and finishing the subdivision for now.
So the only one that would probably generate any legal would be the subdivision? I mean, the River Corridors wouldn't really have much legal, because that's kind of the state is asking for that anyway, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we could always, we probably should run it by him. But it would be pretty much at the final stage.
Right.
You know, it wouldn't be from the get-go.
So it's unlikely we're going to have anything near what we did that one.
We might run the subdivision back
Right.
by him, but yeah, I don't think, and, and there's nothing from the Select Board out for the health.
So if we increase it, couldn't we do like a 500 or a thousand or something? Just to.
You mean increase it or just?
Yeah, just increase it minimal, I mean, it's unlikely we're gonna, with the 1619 the year before, it's unlikely we're gonna go much over 2 to 2,500, I wouldn't think.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of going to be a more normal year than this one with that.
Right.
All those questions we had for it.
And it may depend also, we don't know exactly what the rewrite of the subdivision.
Right, right, that may, that may generate some legal, right?
So we might, yeah, we might want some padding.
Yeah.
To go with 3,000?
I'm sorry?
3,000, we're thinking for line 261. And for Regional Commission, we might as well just keep it at 2. And for your salaries.
I think you have the 132 and just stick right with the actual. Is that? There's a $132 increase of, of this potentially because of the 3% cost of living. So why not add that in and just put it right across?
Add it to the 4409?
Yeah, just so we're, that's actually what every, could if everyone got paid. Where everybody has to be paid. Yeah.
So the, the 4240 was increased by the cost of living to 4409 by cost of living adjustment? We should make another one for 2.5, I agree, yeah.
What does that amount come to?
It comes to
I-41, maybe?
4541. Okay, and then miscellaneous, I mean, we always put 500 in there. Advertising.
Miscellaneous is going to be what, 500 again? Yes.
Yeah. So Bill, what would be the difference between the actuals in '23, '24? Which essentially was $2,000, and what's happening this year, which is so low?
Advertising?
Yeah.
It would have been like, if we did oh, well, it would have been subdivisions, but we had, we had a few, but just, that's usually what it is, anything we're posting for like notices for ordinances or anything like that, that, you know, we have, we want to do, so. The brown hellbills end up in the clerk's office, I don't, I don't usually see them, so. Lot of things, so.
Okay. It could be, yeah, someone else could be paying it.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we keep it at 2,000? And consulting fees, this is, this is outside of legal advice, if we need to hire a consultant for something. We just usually put in a small amount, 500. Sound good?
Good.
All right.
So just a point of interest, the Regional Planning Commission is part of our budget, even though we have no no direct, it's just, just the names are the same. No other direct responsibilities or work on it or anything.
Yeah, I don't know how far back that goes.
Other than the town having that represented, that's it. Doesn't, he doesn't.
And, and it's, it's, yeah, it's doubly weird because it doesn't include the fees that are paid to the Regional Planning Commission. That comes out of somewhere else in the general budget.
Doesn't include what fees?
The fees to the, the annual fees to the Regional Planning Commission.
Oh, sure.
So yeah, it's just kind of an oddity. Okay, we'll go with those numbers. I'm going to keep switching around here. Update in Act 181. That was the one that had the list, the criteria to, to be able to have more control over development in town. And if you met the whole list, you had complete control. You acted, the town would act as who's, who is doing Act 250 now instead of a group, a regional group, but last Select Board meeting, I went and, and reported back on the village designation criteria and how we really don't have much to, to do there, to offer, to even explore. And so, you know, they, they agreed that let's just move on, and since we're moving on, let's not talk about zoning anymore either. So, so we won't be doing all of that extra work for 181. We still have the River Corridor ordinance that we can do, which is, which is going to be mandatory. It has nothing to do with 181, it will be mandatory statewide in a few years. And we've got the subdivision ordinance, both of those were on that list, the criteria for 181. But there were just like two out of like 10 items that had to be met. So, so our workload has decreased dramatically coming up in the next, you know, next half year, year. So we can forget about Act 181 for now, there, there may be a way where we can come up with a planned growth area if we want through Act 181, but all of those details are still very much being figured out. And we may hear about that, more about that in the future. If that's something what, what we want to do, maybe it's, it's something adjoining the city, you know, in one area, something like that. But that's definitely down the pike for us. Now we'll jump back to subdivision ordinance. Where do we stand with that, Bill?
Dana and Norm and I are going to meet yet to kind of go over it, but there's nothing, nothing new on it.
Okay. Excuse me.
What time are we meeting, Bill?
Not today.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't, I don't remember. I've got so many meetings, I'm, I'm in a little trouble with you at all strings at this point, so I, I don't know, but.
I had 3 o'clock, but I wasn't sure.
Sure.
Dana's not here.
Nope.
So anyway.
We'll, we'll connect back up, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably pretty likely we'll need to go back to Kevin Brown with some questions or clarifications.
I will just tell you that I went through Kevin's letter line by line, and with Bill's integration of it. And the work he did was really something.
Uh, Bill did?
I'm sorry?
That Bill did?
Both that Bill did and what Kevin did. And the history and knowledge and recommendations were really spot on. It was, whatever he charged, he was worth it from my view.
And so what kind of ordinance are we going to get out of this? How, how would you summarize the, the ordinance when it comes out of this process, us working on it? Modernized?
Well, certainly, yeah, modernized, much clearer. Well, certainly, yeah, modernized, much clearer, much more in conformity with what the authorizing statutes, uh, provide. There were a lot of situations. I mean, this was very old. Some of the stuff that he corrected went back to 1980, if I remember correctly. And, um, so it hadn't been looked at thoroughly in years and, uh, some of the stuff was no longer authorized by the, uh, enabling legislation. Other of it didn't conform, uh, in any number of cases, as I'm sure Bill recalls. It was far too general to be enforceable. So there was a lot of good, at a very minimum, housekeeping, but much more.
Much more. Does it change what we will be doing when we look at subdivisions in the future?
I think everybody will have to sit down and look at it carefully, uh, before each subdivision application comes to a hearing, and it might be helpful if, uh, prior to a meeting, uh, we're informed as to what sections of the subdivision regulations are at play in this application, like, like today. So that we can look at it and know what we're talking about and not just rely on you.
Okay.
Is it likely that we would have instructions with a form similar to what we have had in the past?
Well, you know, as you said, form, I, I would assume we're gonna have to redo our applications.
We.
We.
I'll help you.
Yeah.
At the right place.
They're gonna need you to redone, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's a significant overhaul and some criteria, if I remember correctly. I didn't have the application with me when I was going through, but.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it was needed and it was done well.
Good to hear.
When you draft this ordinance, or, or is it just, uh, something that we have to sign that the state puts together for us? When, um, when it comes time to put the rubber, the signatures on it?
Well, I don't think so, and I think it just follows the usual process for an ordinance. We present it to the select board and say, you know, done all this work and.
Well, there's a couple of things that I've noticed, uh, traveling around the state as I, I do some. There are particular spots where there's a tremendous amount of debris that's lodged in the, in these, uh, stream areas. And it's definitely an impediment to water flowing through. And would, uh, maybe in some cases, if the situation was bad enough, would, uh, make the difference between whether there was a flood in back of it or not. I, you know, it's, it's hard to say, but certainly not gonna help any.
Right.
And, and I'm wondering if, uh, there's any plan to, by the state to address this.
Well, we're certainly getting more and more debris, aren't we? Whether it's in rivers and streams or woods or, you know, land.
No, but if we're drawing up an ordinance, we ought to leave ourselves some leeway to go in there and be, uh, able to hire a contractor to clean it up, uh, for the benefit of our taxpayers that may be in back of it.
Right, I mean, there are some state permits that are required for removing, you know, the things in streams and rivers. I think it's 10 cubic feet, something like that. It's, it's, um, but, but you're suggesting that be, we consider adding that to the River Corridor?
Well, I'm, I'm considering, I have thought for some time that if we're gonna draw up a legal document, we want to structure that thing so that, uh, somebody has authorization to go in there and, and clean it up. But maybe these things, sorts of things may put the state on notice that we, we got a few problems laying there.
Yeah, and I just, I'll just add one thing to go with that. I mean, I was in St. Johnsbury this week. They are still cleaning up, um, from July. They're still fixing Route 5 and they're still fixing I-91 um, in that area.
And I, and I've, I've always been troubled by the fact since 1981, when, when they passed the law and the legislature, that we couldn't take gravel out of the river for, um, you know, for flow control and widening. You widen a stream, that's a recipe for flooding for somebody. And, uh, I, I really think that, uh, the impact of flooding would be less if we were allowed to take, uh, gravel from the rivers and, uh, uh, under state supervision.
Right, properly disposed of.
That's the way it used to be.
Yeah, okay. Norm?
I was just gonna say, uh, you touched on it. Um, there's an overall statute, state statute that provides the outlines for the River Corridor ordinances in the various towns, if I'm correct.
There, there are some, um, templates out there. Um, I'm not sure.
The templates are authorized by some statute.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's basically, and that gives us the outline of what we can do.
Right, and, and how it usually plays out is that a town comes up, they may change that template, they may add things, subtract things, and then we run that by Kyle Madash, the state DEC. It's like, will this, will this fly? Will this still meet, um, FEMA standards and, and that sort of thing?
So to, uh, work on Jim's sensible, um, suggestions and areas of concern, we would have, we have a template at some point that we'll see and work from and incorporate it into that, and then it goes to the state to see if we.
Yeah, it's the same template we've been looking at for more than a year. Yeah, so everyone, if you don't have a copy, we'll get you another copy, but yes, yeah, it hasn't changed.
I do have misplaced it, I don't recall it.
Yeah. That happens. Okay. So I think we're done with subdivision, um. Well, any, anything else on the River Corridor ordinances? Did anyone come up with any questions for Kyle or any, um, sections of concern? That you want to pinpoint? Maybe we can do that in the next meeting now. Um, there was some concern about the administration. Was that, am I remembering that correctly? Who, who administer this? Any others?
Small questions, I mean, it's not. I, when I went through it, and I haven't gone through it in a while, I had just a few questions, but nothing, nothing that impacted the, the structure of it, just little questions of what.
So what, our next meeting on the 5th of December, let's just go through the ordinance. If you don't have a copy, uh, let Bill know. And we'll go through page by page. Be a fun time.
Second subdivision or the flood plan?
We're, we're on River Corridors now. Yeah, I'm jumping all around. Subdivision, um, we want that sooner than December 5.
Yeah, okay. I'll take you back.
Okay, the, um, Pocket Park.
Um, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So River Corridors, we, do we want to review it in a little more detail for December 5th? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll be looking for something to do during that meeting. So the Pocket Park, um, so the select board wants us to go for this, um, Vermont Department of Forest, Parks and Rec, uh, grant. It's a, it's called the Recreational Trails Program Grant, up to $50,000. Um, I think I misspoke to the select board. I think it's a 20% match for the town. Um, it's, so I'm working my way through that application. Um, uh, it's a pre-app that's due December 6th, uh, and to help me do the budget and, um, I'd like to talk to some trail builders, trail contractors, I'm not sure what they're called, and just get an idea and show them our map. And since this is recreational trails, the grant will be written around building trails. They allow for summendies, but not like picnic tables. There's some odd things that are not allowed. Um, but for markers, signs, historical markers, parking lots are included. Um, probably not the boat launch, uh, but everything terrestrial, I think that we had in mind could be covered. Um, so I'm just trying to put together a budget. Does anyone, has anyone had any, excuse me, experience with trail people? I was hoping Mary Beth might be at meeting time.
I, I, I thought, I, I thought Mary Beth's, we just touched on this at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And I thought Mary Beth was going to be involved in that.
I, yeah, I think it went, like, I asked her to and she said, yeah. Uh, I think, I think she's real busy, um, but she would have knowledge.
I can, I can ask someone who I think has, has had contact with trail builders if they can point it to someone. I.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I was thinking of, of showing our design and, um, so they, they wouldn't have the exact, like, footage, linear footage of the trails, but they would have the, the parcel size and the number of trails that we're looking at.
And they could give us things that are considered when you're building a trail, which I,
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Right, right, materials that would be needed and.
Would you like me to do that or?
That'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great, and the sooner the better. And these don't have to be final budget numbers. It is a pre-app to give them, you know, just to give the reviewers an idea of what we have in mind. And see if they, they like that, like to go in that direction. Um, one thing that would be very helpful for the pre-app would be to finalize the land transfer or whatever that's going to be, uh, sale or, and so, um, Kevin is working on that one for, uh, the select board. Get back to the select board with, um, some information on that, or, or hopefully deconsolate the deal, just get it done. Because it's pretty simple and open-ended from GMP right now. So hopefully he, he can work, Kevin Brown can work that in and so we can get that in the pre-application. Yes, if the town owns it or the town's gonna be leasing it, no problem. Not have it questionable. Okay, what did I, anything else I moved around here? Any questions on, on that? Okay, we've got, um, there's going, there's a proposed, I think you all have it, same son, a proposed solar, another new solar development.
Yeah.
Woodstock Avenue and Prior Lane. Um, this is just notifying us that they're going to be filing for a, a certificate of public good. So 45-day notice, I think. Well, I'm not even sure they've done the 45-day notice. This might be just like.
This is just a, yeah, they say they hadn't yet.
Right.
Did you say Prior Lane?
Yeah. Uh, there's.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. So, uh, 500 kilowatts, uh, looks like 1,200 solar modules owned by, um, Clement Abatiau and, uh, it will be owned by Coughlin, it'll be, once it's done, it'll be owned by Coughlin, Inc. Or a related entity. So just FYI in that one. See? Any other announcements? Right? We've got some minutes to look at, um, October 24th. Let's see, um, Lord, South, Sherman, Jerry, Norm. We've got enough people to vote on these. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve. One second.
Sherman, thank you. Um, discussion?
At one. Um, under new business, no, paragraph two, it says, um, this, it says local hazard mitigation plan update, there's a caption, there you go. It says, "Update the town plan," capital T, capital P. Should that be the town hazard mitigation plan as opposed to the town plan?
Mm-hmm. Well, the town plan is something very specific and, and then that's, that's in our purview, um, exclusively. So, um, you can, you can make it uncapital, you can, you know, make the T not a capital T and just say the town mitigation plan or hazard plan.
That's what I had in mind.
Okay, anything else?
Looked like it was the town plan, and I know what he meant, I know what.
Right, right. No, I'm, I'm with Norm on that one.
I know.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes with, uh, does the maker of the motion agree to?
Yes.
That change? And the section?
Change.
Okay. All those in favor of the, the minutes as revised, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right. Anything else to come before us? Jim, you have, will you be here on the 5th?
I plan to.
Okay. Great.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, Jerry. We are adjourned.